Good evening. It is Wednesday, no, it's Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019.
It's not 7:00.
Six o'clock. We're in Gates for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. I was starting to say Commissioner Cameron was held up testifying on important bill having to do with our garbage burner and trying to get credits to keep it going. And then he commented that he had trouble with Salem's great traffic system. We've been fighting them a little bit. But he's on his way. And so I'll go ahead and start. I'm Commissioner Sam Brentano.
I'm Commissioner Colin Willis.
I'm County Council Jay Bell.
And we always start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and we really love it, so if you'd join us, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I think you love it, too. So we start our meetings and we'll have some presentations. Now this will go, we'll have a regular board meeting, which shouldn't be very long, and then what we call a town hall, which will be more of an opportunity for you to tell us what's going on up here and perhaps what we can help you with. So I'll just name them off the way they were written for people who would like to make some comment. And the first, and I should always have glasses on, but it's Dan Lemke. So if you'd just come up here and go ahead and talk to us, Dan. And he'll be followed by Troy, could be Goldstrom, Goldstrout, but we'll find out. Dan?
Thank you. This is my first time on one of these, so I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to say this. I'm really speaking to the whole group here, but I, this is what I'm facing, so I, this is what I do. I live in Mill City and I'm part of a group that's called the Supporting Saniam Students. It's a PAC. And we are promoting the new school bond that's going to be on the ballot in May here in the North Saniam, or the Saniam Canyon School District. And we've been working since the end of November on this, and we're all excited. And there's been a lot of work done by a lot of people. And I just wanted to, we were told to talk about it to anybody, he'll let you, let you talk.
Okay.
So that's why I came here and was told this would be the way to do it. So I brought some-
You have some information, pass it out?
Trifles, or questions and answers. But if you folks have any questions, did you-
Well, I do. I can read that, I suspect. But what is this bond going to accomplish?
The bond will build a new school that'll, that'll serve our students in our district in grade six through 12. So over half of the students in our school district would have a brand-new school to go to. It also proposes to build a cafeteria, a second cafeteria at the other school in our district, the elementary school. So they'll have, they won't have to cross the street to go to the cafeteria at the high school. And it proposes to build a second gymnasium at the high school. Because one gymnasium for, for all those kids just isn't enough with the new requirements for PE. That's, that's increasing. So those three things, the bond is $17.9 million, which is a lot of money. But the district started at about $80 million was the first quote they had, and they, they worked, the, the school board has worked, worked that down, and they've worked really hard at trying to come up with some, something that will work very well and is affordable. And we're excited and we're optimistic, but we're pushing to the very end on this.
All right. Well, I wish you the best. We'll watch for it. I don't know what I can do to help, but you've got your message out here and, yeah.
Just to be aware that it's happening and, and we feel that it'd make a big difference in, in our community and the canyon here in general, so.
And thank you for taking charge and trying to make it happen. That's important, too.
Yeah. Is there a place, I should lead these or pass them out?
Spread them through the crowd. Most of these must live in the district, most of these people. Thank you. Troy?
Thank you.
A little mood music, kind of get you moving.
My name's Troy Goldstrom, and I'm really here to comment, I think, later in the, with the town hall, but representing the Old School Community and Youth Center in Mahama, up at the, it's the old great Mahama Grade School. And we've talked with Commissioner Willis and another gentleman from the county about some help on the street that goes up to Emma. It's, I don't know, many years ago it was maintained by the county, but for whatever reason it was no longer. And there were some issues, and we wanted to have a conversation with the county regarding possible help with that.
What is it, Emma Street again?
Emma Street.
Emma? Emma, yes.
Yeah.
I should remember that.
It's a famous street in town.
Well, I used to run the garbage route.
Yeah.
I knew everybody in Mahama at one time.
Right, right.
All right.
That's all comments I have.
All right, thank you. I'll look it up for you.
All right, thanks.
Can I connect Troy with Brian?
Pardon me?
I connected Troy with Brian.
Oh, did you already? That's who I was going to go to.
Yep, so hopefully-
Brian's our new Public Works Director.
I didn't get on that list, I was getting ready.
Sure.
I sent you a letter from somebody, are you talking about that later?
About what?
Are we talking about Emma Street later?
Perhaps, he acted like we would be. Go ahead, sit down and tell us, and if you'd introduce yourself, too, please. And close to the microphone, if I'm seeing it right.
My name is Michelle Gates, and I am actually here for somebody else, Micah Ketto, who couldn't be here today, but she lives on Emma Street, and she wanted me to ask you for your help with this issue. She wanted to point out, there's a couple of really good reasons why Emma Street should be taken care of. And one is that there's an active community center up there, which Troy just brought up. There's a viable and functioning fire hydrant on the same portion of the road, so it does serve the fire services to that area. There's a natural spring that runs from the top of the hill to the bottom that creates a car-sized pothole that needs to be fixed should it turn out to, should the county decide to take back over the road. She says there's no indicative signs showing that this portion is not a county road. It looks like a county road. It should be taken care of like a county road and should be maintained as such. So those are her comments. She's a very nice woman. She'd really like this road fixed.
You know, I appreciate that. I don't know the status of Emma. A lot of roads in the county are really private roads and up to the adjoining property owners, but we'll certainly look into it and see how we can move it along if possible.
She would appreciate that. And the community center as well, so thank you.
I spoke with Brian, and this is indeed a private road.
I thought maybe.
Yeah, so.
Well, we have other programs where even if it is a private road, we've helped to put it together and get it, get it built and funded, and we can look at those kinds of stuff. It does have to be paid by the adjoining property owners, but there could still be a way to make it better. All right. Ron Adams?
Yeah, I think Troy and Michelle have covered everything.
Okay. Good to see you again. Dave Shelton?
I'm just, just going to welcome everybody, and I'll wait for the town hall, so.
All right, and Jerry Marr, I should recognize you. Where are you, Jerry? There he is.
Well, appreciate you folks coming up.
Absolutely.
Hope you had a nice drive up and enjoy the beauty up here. My name is Jerry Marr, City of Gates. And we are very concerned about a sewer system up here. And we're trying to get a sewer district formed, which Lyons, or not Lyons, but Idana, Detroit, Gates, and Mill City are working together to get one formed. We have a real problem up here in this canyon, because we have probably 1,000 septic tanks sitting right on the edge of the Saniam River. And if we don't do something soon, we're going to have a real problem up here. Because we, most of our communities have septic tanks that are either in failure or about to. And we need the support. And we do have the support of Marion County. We thank you for that. And we need all the help we can get, everybody behind us to help us to support this program. And one of the main reasons it's so important, especially for you folks downriver, is we want to keep this river clean. And if we keep, get a sewer district in here, this will eliminate the problem of, maybe of pollution up in this area. And if it come to the point where we did pollute the river, and the government stepped in and said we had to build a sewer system, they would have to go borrow the money. And we couldn't afford that, because our sewer bill would probably be $150 a month. But if we can get a, a grant to take care of this for us, well, then we can afford to do it and do a proper job. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce the late Kevin Cameron. You're in charge. I tried to welcome, didn't do very good.
Commissioner, I-
Could you do us a favor? Could you move this table to one side or the other, so they're half-facing the crowd and not just talking to us the same way?
Maybe, yeah, maybe over here, that way you can get them on camera, too.
Then people can hear what's being said.
So thank you, Commissioner. I apologize, I'm late, but I've been in the Capitol most of the day, and you know how things run in the Capitol. It's pretty interesting. The last meeting I was in was, we're trying to, well, I, I want to say, say, I want to say, save our waste-to-energy facility down in Brooks, where we turn your waste into electricity. And it's pretty interesting what's going on in the building. So I was in meetings with a couple of senators and Covanta. So I apologize for being late, and I thank these two and all of you for being here tonight, so.
So we're just done with this?
Did we already go through our, so we just got done with public comment?
Yep.
So Jerry, it was good to see you. Now, I was almost going to call you mayor, but where'd he go already?
He's back there.
Yeah, he's back there, yeah. Thanks for your service. So we're on to-
The presentations.
Presentations? All right. So our first presentation, Mayor Tucker. Mayor of Gates, thank you for being here tonight. If you want to, think you're going to welcome everybody?
No, I'm going to run.
You're going to run?
My name's Daniel Tucker. I am the Mayor of Gates. I replace Jerry Marr. I just, I do want to welcome everybody here. I've never had the opportunity to speak or even see any of the commissioner meetings. And I try to go to other meetings as I can, almost all Mill City, their council meetings. I have gone to the council of governments board meetings. And I intend to, it's, it's a learning experience for me, since I am new at this. Like Jerry said, we have a problem. We have a problem with sewers, or there will be a problem. Been fortunate to work with Daniel Gonzalez on the, on the group that she's giving guidance to, for the sewer and broadband also. Because that's another issue, especially up in Idana. But I just wanted to welcome you folks here, welcome everybody here, representatives from the other cities, and the, just the general public, and, you know, that see that there's enough interest, you know, where we can fill up a room like this. Unfortunately, I'd like to see more come to our regular city council meeting, but we're trying to work on that.
We usually have two or three at our Wednesday morning meeting, just so you know.
Oh, well, I don't feel so bad, then. But we've, we're trying different things. We're trying to set up options for people to pay, like their, their water bills, you know, instead of, you know, right now the only option is pay by check. We're trying to, we're setting up a system where they can pay online if they want, and a couple other options. And we're also using the back of our water bills, we mail out, which were blank, we're going to put information like council meetings, billing in, you know, other information to the general public, so, because a lot of people don't come to the meetings, you know, but they, everybody gets a bill. And so we're using that platform also. But other than that, that's pretty much it for right now.
Well, we thank you, we thank you for opening up your city and the fire hall. We always enjoy coming here, and thank you for your service to your community. So, is Jim here?
Yeah.
How did I miss you?
I am afraid.
You're everywhere, where I get, everywhere I go, you're there.
I follow you.
Is that what it is?
Ahead of you, I'm, I'm-
I got some sheriffs. Can I get a stalking order on the mayor, Detroit, please?
So, thank you, commissioners. Just wanted to again, like everybody else, welcome you to the canyon and everything that you've been doing. I, I think it's important that these people know how committed you as a, and you heard this a couple of weeks ago, sorry about that, but how committed you as a board are to assisting us with the problems in the canyon. You've heard about the sewer. And of course, that's a major issue for us, and really would help us in our economic rebound. So thank you so much for that. And that has to go to, I can talk, Commissioner Janet Carlson before she left. And Commissioner Willis has really filled in, and I feel the same support from him that we've received from, from both of you guys. So we so much appreciate that. I think it was, I was attending a meeting with Danielle a couple of weeks ago about broadband. It became apparent to me how involved the whole county is, because Danielle O'Gara's, when we were meeting with HPH Engineering, our engineering consulting firm, about broadband to Detroit, and Tamara Getch was there, and Joe Hoag was there. And I got that sense of commitment, not only from Danielle, but from those two people and up to you. So I think that speaks well for how this commission fills, works for the people of Marion County, and I think we should be very appreciative of that. I will share one story I had, I was at a Midmayors Association meeting about three months ago, and commissioners came up from the different tri-counties. I won't say the cities involved, because it would name the counties, but at the end of my talking about our commissioners, I had two mayors from two separate cities come up and say, could we change commissioners? And I said, no, we'll keep you guys, thank you very much. Go. It wasn't, it was a lot closer, closer than Josephine, so we go from there. But that's really what I wanted to do, was thank you so much for your commitment to the canyon. The good that you are doing is, is unmeasurable. I think many of us would have thought the sewer project would not have gotten this far. And, and now with broadband, some very interesting things are happening there, again, in the canyon. Thanks to you and Danielle Gonzalez and, and her workmates. So thank you very much.
Mayor, thank you for your service, not only as mayor, but what you did in your career to public safety and public service. So thank you.
Thank you.
And we've mentioned Danielle a couple of times. Danielle, you stand up, just there.
They, they know her.
Yeah, you all know Danielle. When, when people think of Marion County and the canyon, they just think of Danielle, and probably one of our famous deputies who's out, out here tonight, too. So thank you, Mayor. We have another presentation from city councilor from Mill City. Is, who's, who's here representing Mill City?
My name's Tony Trout.
Great. Tony, if you want to introduce yourself?
Jen, Cyan Hall was scheduled to be here today, and I just found out an hour ago she couldn't make it. So I don't have any of her notes or anything, but I'll hit a few high points in Mill City.
Great.
Marion County, as you know, and Mill City is only a small part, but with the highway, it's a very important part to us. It's where our trade mostly goes on. We have a lot of things going on in Mill City now, such as with Danielle Gonzalez, our Tiger Grant we won, which is very important, and also a combination with Lynn County, the state, the federal, and Marion County, along with Mill City, we have the Tiger Grant going on. And we also have a skate park project going on. We have, I can't even remember, Trails, what was that, Danielle?
Rails to Trails.
What was it?
Rails to Trails.
Rails to Trails. We have that going on. That's a big part of the Tiger Grant also. And we appreciate the work that Danielle has done with all the Marion County commissioners, and really appreciate you coming up here in our part of the canyon and visiting us. And Councilor Hall sincerely apologizes for not being able to make it.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for your service on the council as well.
And Linda's a friend of mine, Troy, you're good.
Well, if Linda's a friend of yours, she must be a friend of ours.
Yeah.
So Linda Harrington, come on up.
Thank you very much.
Got to be careful when Sam says, Sam says you're a friend of his, you know? We, we never know.
I, I want to, I'd like to just build on the Mayor of Gates comments and say that as a resident of Marion County, I've known each of you over the years. And we are very fortunate, and I would say very blessed, to have three men of, I would say, integrity, compassion, and work ethic to serve us. So I thank you for your service, each of you, very much.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight to talk about the photography contest for the Save Our Bridge Committee. A little context, five years ago, some people got together in Mill City, formed the Save Our Bridge Committee, we're known as the SOBs. And we looked at, we looked at our little railroad bridge, and we said, this is a sad thing, there are lichens growing all over it, there's some flickering lights that are kind of falling down. We thought, let's try to rehab this. And so we went to the city, and we said, you know, if you partner with us, we will raise the funds to rehab Mill City's historic railroad bridge. At the time, we had no idea about its architectural significance, we didn't know about its historical significance, but we knew it runs right through a main part of town, and we wanted to fix it. So we proceeded along to, with the goal of $1.2 million to rehab the bridge. And we were about a third of the way there, and a woman whose name has been mentioned several times here tonight, Danielle Gonzalez, came to our meeting and said, I think we should go for a Tiger Grant. And we said, okay, sure. And the rest is history. We are one of 41 locales in the country to receive an $8.1 million Tiger Grant. When we bring in the funds from the Mill City match and the Lynn County match, it's going to be a $9.4 million project. So it's an exciting thing for the canyon. And then I went to, I went online and saw that Marion County Public Works, uh-oh. I guess we'll go on, okay? Anybody ask for leave at this point? Volunteer firemen, okay. I went online and we saw that Marion County Public Works had actually run a photography contest for the Gallen House Bridge at its centennial a few years ago. So I called Brian, your new Public Works supervisor, who was just so gracious and jumped on board and said, yes, we'd love to help with the contest. He brought in Jolene Bray from his office, who has just run with it. Some, Saniam Hospital is sponsoring $1,000 in prize money. So I just encourage all of you, there's some flyers here, to take a look at it. There are four categories, and you may submit two photos for each category. The first prize is $500, and the other prize is $125. So we're pretty excited. And please mark your calendars for Saturday, September 14th. That's the celebration, the centennial celebration. The award winners will be announced, we have a live band, antique cars, all kinds of fun things going on. So that's the date.
Do you want to repeat that again?
Saturday, September 14th, in Mill City at the bridge, a big party.
So are commissioners eligible for this contest, I wondered?
Boy, you are eligible, because, well, I-
I'll tell you why I'm asking. I got this camera, and it makes everything blurry. No, I'm not making it up.
A flip phone?
And it's, it's kind of artistic. It is, it's got that. I think I could be a contender.
Why, get your entry in, get your entry in.
I've seen him paint before.
A flip phone for-
His flowers are much prettier than his paintings.
I know, I know.
Anyway, thanks.
I used to be a flip phone guy.
Thanks to you, thanks to your staff, and we're excited to run with this.
Well, thank you. Thank you for what you did. And Commissioner Willis and I were back in Washington DC and thanked our federal delegation for that, everything they did to help us get that grant. And one of the things that we heard from the feds was the community raising of $400,000 in this small community for that project got their attention, and that's a big, big reason why you got that grant.
We heard over and over-
Over and over again about-
How impressed they were with, with this community.
This community, what the community did.
Yeah.
And they matched, well, they more than matched it, but yeah.
That's awesome.
That's great.
Thank you so much.
Our next presentation, Linda Strike from Mid Willamette Community, I guess it's not Linda, yeah, Linda's here. Mid Willamette Community Action Agency, and we're going to talk a little bit about the Veteran Services Office and where we're at with that. And you have a guest with you.
We lost our chair.
We can bring another chair over.
We got it. Thank you.
Ryan, they should be introduced.
Right here, that's where I just wrote down, yeah. You didn't do that yet?
No.
Okay, good. I'm going to, I'm going to have anybody from the community. Yeah.
I'm Linda Strike from Community Action Agency, Arches Project. I'm program manager there. And one of the programs that I supervise is our Veteran Service Office. And we came today to provide an update to the commissioners, and also with the goal of providing some awareness, we're hoping that our presence helps people in the canyon know about the services available to the veterans of your community. We've been, part, we've been doing this since January of last year. We started the program through a grant from Marion County, and we were the last county in the state. And so we've been really, there's been a lot of excitement around the fact that we now have Veteran Service Office of our own in Marion County. We have been doing the program on-site at our Arches building since June of this last year. And we will be relocating to make services more accessible to our veterans come, the official start date of our new location will be May 6th. And I brought James Riddle with me. He was recently promoted from Veteran Service Officer to Lead Veteran Service Officer. And he's going to kind of just let you know what's been happening in the office. We filled a vacancy just recently, and that individual started his training yesterday. He moved from Texas, and two days later has been at ODVA all day getting trained. So, James, I'll let you go ahead and-
Welcome, James.
Thank you. Like Linda said, I am the new Lead Veteran Service Officer. I spent almost 18 years in the service and am service-connected myself, so I know the frustrations a lot of the veterans in our area have dealing with VA and VA issues. Our office is going to be working with the service-connected disabilities, non-service-connected pensions, survivors' benefits, education benefits, the whole gamut that goes along with benefits that the VA offers. Last year, just for some numbers, I personally saw 10,121 veterans, single point, not multiple times. Our office brought in over $3 million in back payments that the VA owed to veterans. That isn't the pension, monthly pensions coming in, it's not the service-connected disability compensations coming in, that is just back money that the VA owed those veterans. The other monthly benefits are just a nice add-on on top of that. Like Linda said, we had Timothy Boykin, another veteran also, start yesterday. We are really excited to have another VSO in the office. It will be about another year before he is accredited and will be able to see veterans by himself. The accreditation process takes about a year. We are hoping to have a third VSO up with us. That VSO, our intentions are to have them as a roving VSO, to be able to come out into the canyon. That's been one of our hot-button issues for, in, in Arches for many years, knowing that a lot of the veterans are underrepresented and underserved in these areas. So it is our goal to have a Veteran Service Officer out here to be able to meet with you guys. But again, once we get that third VSO, it's going to be about another year before they're capable of coming out and providing those services. But it is on our, on the horizon for our office.
I do also, though, want to point out that if there is a veteran who is in this area and transportation is the barrier to getting services, that we will work with them- them to find a way to get them the services they need. And as James mentioned, outreach into, you know, Marion County has more rural than it does anything else, and in our services through Community Action, that has been a constant struggle and goal, is how do we get those services out to the people who need them? So, that will be our focus over the coming year. And I also wanted to mention that as part of Community Action Agency, one of our goals is to integrate services as well. So, the Veteran Service Office frequently has people who come in who use the Veteran Services that they provide, but they also need other types of things. And so, we have other staff available to jump in and help with housing when people have unstable housing or are homeless, or energy assistance, or those kinds of things, and help direct them to the proper resources.
Great. Linda, that was one of my questions, I think you started to answer it, but if, I think in the presentation you gave us in the past, you talked about already you've had people in the canyon, out on the road, or up in North Marion County, so that's already happening now.
We do.
We're just looking to have a full-time person that would be able to do that.
So, they would be, our goal is to have scheduled, regular, so every month, we would have, you know, depending on the need, one or two days in an identified place. Right now, we're doing it as is needed, or for special events, but the goal is that we will have scheduled throughout all of different areas in rural Marion, where we'll be able to say, on this day at this time, this individual will be there for the day, and they're available for you. So, that's what we're working toward.
If our citizens here tonight know a veteran who needs some help and services, how would they get in contact with the office?
So, we did leave information over here on the table. James's card is there, my card is there, and then a brochure. The address on the brochure is our current address, and like I said, we will be changing that address, but until everything's finalized, we don't want to put that out, but it will go out on the Marion County website, on the ODVA website, on the Arches Community Action Agency website, so it'll be posted every place, so that people will be aware as soon as we have a new address.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
And James, thank you for your service to our country as well, appreciate it. Community project grant. Are we going to do that tonight, Danielle? Really? Fantastic. Huh? I think I signed this check, I was waiting to cash it.
Hard to carry around your wallet. There's a lot of stories here, but, so yes, my name is Danielle Gonzalez, I work for Marion County. I have the wonderful privilege of working in the North Saniam Canyon, and I've been doing that for about three and a half years. The community has welcomed me, and I'm so grateful, they've given me pretty much free rein of any time I drop into somebody's store or restaurant, they either feed me, or, which is why I get this girlish figure. So, you guys take good care of people, and so I just wanted to say thank you to that. So, we would like to actually present a giant check. So, if all of the people that have served or come to the North Saniam's Joint Sewer Task Group meetings, please stand.
You go ahead and leave.
Okay, so we're going to ask that you guys come up to the front here.
Line up and face your...
And I need someone to get pictures. Thank you, Jolene.
So, we're going to turn towards the camera here a little bit. The camera's right behind you, this way. Can you get that?
Nope. Nope, this is for you guys.
So, can anybody read how much money this is? 25,000 dollars. Danielle?
Yes, right here.
What is it for?
So, this is for the North Saniam Joint Sewer Task Group, and this is so they can take the very, very next step. The next step is actually getting legal advisement to move forward on setting up a special sewer.
And so, this is a 25,000 dollar grant that's being awarded using our lottery dollars to make that happen to the canyon. Great. Okay? Look at Jolene.
Look at you. One, two.
All right. Well, congratulations to those of you who have been participating. Counselor from Detroit is stealing the 25,000 dollars already.
I'm just borrowing.
Well, before we go into our board action, there's a lot of people here from Marion County that serve you in many ways, and rather than me trying to point them all out, maybe I could have anybody who works for Marion County. I know our district attorney's here, we have several deputies here, our assessor is here. If you wanted to stand up and turn and just face and introduce yourself one by one, and just tell them what you do to serve them, except for Tom, you may not want to because you collect taxes, I don't know. You don't collect them, you just assess them. What's that?
Can we use the table?
Oh, yeah, you want to come over at the table, one by one, so you can get them on tape? Okay. You can line up, so it goes quick.
I like ordering Paige around.
I can tell you're enjoying it.
Jolene, Brenda, Jolene.
I thought later.
All right. I'm willing to do some...
Maybe just hold the mic up.
Yeah.
Hello, I'm Tom Rolfing, I'm the Marion County Assessor. Thank you very much.
I'm Gary Christopherson, the IT Deputy Director.
Hi, I'm Paige Clarkson, I'm the District Attorney, so I like to try to boss all those guys with badges around back there, but it doesn't work at all.
Any special issues out here they need to know about?
You know, I'm happy to answer any questions, if anybody has questions about sort of how your criminal justice system works in Marion County, how we work with law enforcement, but...
And you'll be here, staff will be here for the Town Hall, and that's when we'll get into some more details of questions and answers.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Hi, I'm Brenda, I'm the Board Clerk. I work with Commissioners every day, and we go, and we help set this up.
And Lisa's back there, helped Brenda set that up, works in our board's office.
Brian May, Environmental Services Division Manager.
I'm Joe Cast, I'm the Enforcement Division Commander. Come here, guys.
I'm Mark Farron, I'm the East District Deputy for, fourth season now.
And I'm Jim Crager, I'm the East County Supervisor.
Scott Comets, I'm the Marine Patrol Deputy.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Stutrude, Lieutenant with the Marion County Sheriff's Office.
And I'm Brian Nicholas, I'm celebrating three months as your Public Works Director.
I'm doing a great job.
Do you know MSU yet?
Yes, I do.
Good evening, Brian Vincent, County Engineer, and on my second week of the job.
Doing a great job. Anybody else did we miss? All right, well, you've got several of your 1,700 Marion County employees that we, that serve you and every day strive to do an excellent job for you. And I just want you to know, the reason I didn't get a ticket on the way up here trying to get here late is because all the deputies are in the room. I was not doing the speed limit, I'll have to admit that right now, so. I guess you can give me a ticket because I just said that, right? What is the reason you got pulled over?
They're scribbling, as you say.
Yeah. I know, I talk too much.
It's on film, it's all good.
Guilty. Okay, so, want to go right into our business and consent calendar, is it your turn?
I don't know, usually with hard words, I try not to, but I'll go ahead, and there is one right off that'll get me. I'd like to make a motion to approve our consent calendar this evening, under Board of Commissioners and OLC application with a recommended approval.
Spanish.
Do you know it better than I do?
I think he does.
Do you? Okay, it's like, "Luchero, y antojitos el carico." And they're approved. Approve a ratification of memorandum of understanding with Marion Pope Coordinated Care Incorporated, Pacific Source Health Care Plans, and Trillium Community Plan regarding the ongoing role of Marion County within the coordinated care organization. Health and Human Services, approve Amendment 16 to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Oregon Health Authority for the 2017 to 19 financing of public health services to add 3,563 dollars to update programs and CFR language. Under Information Technology, approve a purchase order with SHI International Corporation for 108,666.64 for various software licenses. SHI International is an Oregon State price agreement. Public Works, schedule the final consideration to adopt administrative ordinance concurring in a city of gerbous urban growth boundary amendment for April 10, 2019, and the last is approve intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for continued issuance of oversized overweight transportation permits.
Good job, Commissioner. We have a motion?
I don't, that first one was beyond me.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion of second, any further discussion? I know the ratification is on a letter that we did yesterday, was that yesterday? That second one was a ratification of that letter for memorandum of understanding, so we know what that is. Okay, motion of second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, okay. That's done, we'll move on to our two action items. Our first action item is under the assessor's office, consider approval of Amendment Number Three with Pictometry International Corporation to add 51,558, 558.12 to geospatial, I'm going to let you say that. Spatial Information System, GIS imagery data. Tom, welcome, and Scott. Not Scott. Yeah, Gary.
Good evening, Commissioners. The request before you is seeking approval for additional funds needed to complete a second aerial flight of county lands. In 2016, the county entered into an agreement with a vendor to provide three separate flights of high-resolution images for county lands. This also included the purchase of software products to access the information online, and included desktop software and application integration tools. Three flights over multiple gears were requested, as this provides the ability to see changes over time. At this time, we have not been able to assess changes over time, as we only have a single layer of imagery that was purchased in 2016. The imagery we purchased can be configured to provide multiple levels of resolution to meet specific business goals. In the initial flight in 2016, there were 264 square miles of three-inch resolution that we purchased, and the three-inch resolution was used to fly over the most populated areas of Marion County, so we'd get the highest resolution. There were 620 square miles of six-inch resolution. This was done in the less populated areas of Marion County, and the remainder of the county is mostly forested lands, and none of those were flown. The contract provides two different types of imagery to the county. The first is what we call orthogonal imagery, and this provides a true top-down view of lands and is rectified to align with a map grid. Most of us would be familiar with this type of imagery, it's what you get on your phone when you type in an address and say, take me there, that's what you see, it's a very two-dimensional view. That imagery solution easily integrates into county GIS applications, and it provides a comprehensive understanding of property, land features, and topography. The second type of imagery that we purchased is called oblique, and this is imagery captured at a 40 to 45 degree angle, and you might be also familiar with this kind of imagery because it provides a side view of a piece of property or a building, so if you're familiar with Google Earth or Bing, as you move around your mouse, you can actually see a building as you go by it, and so we also purchased that type of imagery also. That imagery provides a more natural perspective and makes objects easier to recognize and interpret, and it also provides users the ability to interact with, measure, and extract data from the image itself. The second flight, which is what we're asking for approval for, is scheduled for this spring. Several requests were made to enhance the imagery that resulted in the increased cost that you're asked to approve. The first was an increased resolution from six-inch to three-inch resolution up the North Fort Canyon Road. That request was specifically made by Public Works Emergency Management for the creation of wildfire pre-plans, and also for emergency preparedness plans. They need a higher resolution in order to see roads and trails and evacuation routes. The second increase was specifically done for economic development, so this was increased area and increased resolution, again, from six to three up the Saniam Canyon. These specifically support economic development projects, specifically broadband and the Saniam River projects. And lastly, we partnered with Metcom 911 to increase the imagery coverage area in Lynn County, south of Marion County. This will provide a common operating picture for Emergency Management Services and first responders ditch dispatch via 911, and this will be funded solely by Metcom. And it assists first responders on emergency calls to locate buildings, access points to property, and it allows them to locate propane tanks, gas tanks, and things like that when they're responding. If anybody's wondering why higher resolution is needed, there's a lot of reasons, I just kind of want to highlight the big four. Multiple layers of imagery, of high-resolution imagery over time can provide better analysis of changes in land use, growth of vegetation, and building construction activity. It can also provide clear identification of features and boundaries. Higher resolution provides a more detailed view of the real world, allowing visual inspection, analysis, and accurate measurements from a desktop computer. And lastly, it reduces site visits that staff would normally have to take, because they can view the imagery online, and they don't have to drive out into the field. The total cost of the 2019 project is 266,990 dollars. Funding for this project is coming from multiple sources. We have an approved capital purchase, or a capital improvement project, and Public Works, Community Services, and Metcom are all contributing to the cost of this project. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Tom Rolfing to help explain how it's actually being used in the field.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, Gary. I'm Tom Rolfing, the Marion County Assessor, so our department uses this information quite a lot. It creates for us an accurate record of what exists and of properties. It allows us more accurate and fair assessments of properties. It saves our staff quite a few visits out in the field, and it helps us to communicate when somebody does come in and we're looking at a property, and it lets us explain what we have done and what they're seeing, and we can reach agreement much quicker. It saves us field visits, it means that our visits that we do make are less intrusive, we don't have to walk a whole property to determine if we think there's a structure on the back 40 type of thing, or if farm use is being applied to the whole property or not. There's a lot of properties that we don't have to go to beyond the front door with this imagery, so. With that, it's been very helpful also to speed up the amount of work that we do, it's created a lot of efficiencies for us, so. With that, thank you for supporting this project.
Okay, Danielle, did you have something there?
So, this is one of those projects that you don't necessarily think that we need until you need it, right? So, one of the things that would have been helpful when we were dealing with the drought a few years ago, would have been side-by-side imagery, and this is a perfect example of why we could use that for the water situation from Detroit all the way down the canyon. Also, for our broadband project, knowing the height of a building is extraordinarily helpful for us, if we're looking at putting any kind of larger posts or anything like that to actually use that as, for Wi-Fi purposes and all of that stuff. So, all of these things, this is why the Community Services Department and Economic Development has been really pushing for this, and making sure that the imagery is actually all the way up through the full canyon, so we could get all the way up through Idana. Google Maps does not collect this information out in these rural areas, and the reason that the timing is really important in this scenario is because we want to get it when there's not as... there's not as much tree coverage. I mean, out in the canyon, there's a lot, but in other parts of the county, the tree coverage is still nonexistent. So that's part of the reason why we're wanting to move as quickly as we can, so.
Questions for staff?
You said that this was funded by Public Works, Community Services, and Metcom. Is the assessor's office funding this as well?
Not directly out of our budget, no.
What's the split between the three departments?
The last time, so we have approval of two capital improvement projects, one for this year for a hundred thousand and one next year for a hundred thousand. And then Public Works agreed to contribute $38,000 to this project. Community Services agreed to contribute $15,000, and Metcom's contribution for their portion was $16,500.
So when you said, oh, there's a hundred grand of capital improvements, question?
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred, one for you. Got it. Got it. Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just other availability, other users that weren't listed. Is it, I thought I heard once that it was available, but then it really didn't sound like it. So can it be used or accessed by others?
We in IT use it as a base layer on all of our GIS applications, so it directly benefits almost all the people that work at Marion County. The District Attorney's Office asks us to create maps all the time for them, and we always use this imagery because it's such high resolution and gives the detail needed. The Sheriff's Office has crime scene investigations that we do maps for, so these show up in courtrooms quite a bit, and we're using this imagery for that purpose.
Public business opportunities or what?
If I can speak to that a little bit, the map viewers that Marion County creates and City of Salem has created, this imagery is available to the public through, well, Property Records. The Property Records website is used an awful lot by the public. And Connect Explorer can be used. It's used by many of the cities, and it's a way to share not only the imagery but our other data, ownership information for the departments that need that kind of thing. Our tax lot layer, the boundaries, it gives you an idea of where the tax lots are in relation to the rest of the property. All the tax information is available there. It's a communication tool. It's a way to show other data. You can also show, we have FEMA flood layers in here. There's all kinds of information that can be shown on this imagery.
And I'll just say one more thing. When we initially started discussing this piece, we talked about having the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments and a lot of other cities potentially access the data. We have not really, if I'm not mistaken, we have not come to whether or not that would be charged out or something like that. For the small cities, really, we thought that this was a benefit that they could potentially use for their areas that they wouldn't have access to this data.
Great.
Mr. Sheriff, I move that we approve Amendment Number Three with Pictometry International Corporation to add $51,558.12 for geospatial information system imagery data.
Second.
No motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, okay, thank you.
Now I'll say it, I don't need three-inch resolution on me and my hot tub.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna, I was gonna say. I can see the Commissioner taking a picture of some plane flying over him while he's in the hot tub right now.
With his flip phone.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be blurry.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for coming up to the canyon tonight and doing business. Just think, you don't have to do this tomorrow morning because normally it would be at nine o'clock tomorrow morning. Okay, so Danielle, you're gonna stay up here. Under Community Services, our next action item is consider approval of Amendment Number One to the Contract for Services with Travel Salem to add $125,000 annually for a total of $500,000 to extend the agreement until June 30, 2023 for economic development in Marion County.
So I am filling in for Tamara Getch. Please excuse me, I don't actually have the contract in front of me. So the one piece that was a little off on the scheduling piece, this is actually a total of $625,000 over a five-year period. The $500,000 is actually the increase from what we approved from last year. So over the five years, we're just doing a contract amendment at this point. And so the question is, you know, we had a work session earlier today. This is separate from that work session, but I wanted to answer any questions that you may have. We could potentially move forward, and if you have a different decision on the work session that we looked at this morning with Travel Salem, then we can, you know, make another amendment to the contract. But at this point, this is a five-year contract that would go to 2023. Making sure I've got that right date.
Correct.
And that would extend it for an additional four years from last year, if that makes sense.
So this is only, this is existing $125,000 that we gave Travel Salem, not gave, but granted to Travel Salem. This is, again, lottery dollars that we use. They use this in their budget to help promote areas of travel. We had a presentation today. They are requesting more. I guess my preference would be, I think they're requesting $200,000. My preference would be to approve this contract extension. We can, we didn't get a chance to deliberate today's discussion or today's presentation that we would go ahead and approve this, and then if we want to have a further discussion, we can always come back and amend the contract and the budget. I don't know what my two Commissioners think.
Well, we didn't get a chance to really talk about it. I got a lot of information. I would prefer to approve it for this year and maybe have more of a conversation before we lock ourselves into five years on a contract like this, just because I kind of came away from that a little bit with some questions, I guess. And so I'd like to have a little bit more time to discuss further before we just sign a five-year contract. But I'd be comfortable signing at least a one-year contract.
So I think I'm saying the same thing, but they asked for $200,000. I didn't feel like the case was really made, so there's, it implies some further discussion. Maybe they could make it. They do a lot of good things. I don't have anything against them. They promote the county. I've asked them to work on the Oregon Garden, and if you heard in the presentation, about six different things they did for them, so that's all good. But I'm in agreement to just leave it like it is and talk again about it at a further time and see if literally they do make the case.
So I heard two different things. You don't wanna approve this motion?
Oh, even this?
Or this potential motion in front of us.
I'm fine with the dollar amount for a year, for this year. I'm just not sure, I wanna sign a five-year contract right now, but obviously, you guys have a different opinion of stuff like that, okay?
Well, I was told, I was told by Mr. Latimer, I believe it was, or was it Tamra, that this contract, this is, this allows us to renew the contract every year. It doesn't necessarily make it automatic. I mean, it doesn't, we're not into a contract that we have to, we're not obligated to go five years with this. This allows us not to put out a request for proposal every year because we've been doing business. So I think in the contract, there's someplace where we could actually say, "We're not gonna do this next year."
The contract language should state, and that's what our typical contract language would state.
And I'm looking for that right now.
It's based on the, if funding is approved or available. And so that's the one key, I would say, there.
Because we don't have the internet up here, I can't get into my computer and find it.
I have it here.
Yeah.
I think the, and maybe this is something that I need to talk to Dan about. The allocation's for $625,000, and so I think that's the part that I...
You know what, I'm confused enough. I'd be satisfied to table it if there was agreement for that until we can square it up what we're dealing with.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
It's either that or, I mean, because this does not need to be acted on today because they have their funding for this year.
They have their funding for the remainder of the fiscal year.
This is a formality to allow us not to have to put out for a request for proposal for the next five years, and we got information today. You got educated in things that you hadn't seen. So I'm really good about, in fact, just tabling this to another time and having a discussion and seeing where we're really at.
So we should make a motion to do that, I assume, Jane? Yeah.
Is that me again?
Yeah, is it your motion? Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Sheriff, I move that we table consideration of the approval of Amendment Number One to the Contract for Services with Travel Salem and come back and discuss it at a later time.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to table and discuss in the future. All those in favor signify by, oh, any further discussion?
Just this, well, I don't remember ever tabling anything, so it's rather rare, but sometimes we're confused.
I'm kinda hungry if you wanna put it on the table. So I think it's a wise decision for us to do that, based on, we just came, it was like three hours ago.
Yeah.
Three hours ago, we got a presentation, yeah.
Yeah, but I think we're on the same page.
Okay. So there's a motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, okay. That concludes our business. Commissioner, do we have a calendar?
We sure do.
If you wanna read the calendar, where we're gonna be, the places next week, and...
Okay, and start tomorrow.
And this is, just so you know, this is something we do every week. You can go to our website, you can look at where we're gonna be, where potentially two or more Commissioners are gonna be. We post that to our website so you know that we're not, well, you know where we're at.
That's right.
And if there's two of us in one room, we potentially have a quorum, so that's why we read this calendar.
These are all public meetings. So tomorrow is April 4, and at noon, we're gonna be in Woodburn at Luis's Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn. And that's our monthly Woodburn meeting. On April 4, Thursday, at seven in the morning, we're gonna be at the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce Public Policy Meeting. That's located at 1110 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem. Later, at 9:30 a.m. on Thursday, the 4th, we're gonna have a Department Head-Elected Officials meeting located in the Commissioners Boardroom on the fifth floor of our office building, that's 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. On April 8, that's a Monday, at eight in the morning, we have the Association of Oregon County Steering Legislative Committee and Board Meeting, and that's located at the Local Government Center at 1201 Court Street Northeast in Salem. Later that day, Monday, April 4, excuse me, Monday, April 8, at three in the afternoon, we have a Marion County Housing Initiative meeting with the City of Salem located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of our building, that's 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. On Tuesday, April 9, at 7:30 in the morning, we have the State and Marion County meeting located at Cover Bridge Cafe in Staton, and that's 510 North Third Avenue. On Tuesday, April 9, at 9:30 in the morning, we have a work session, and that's our Quarterly Roads and Bridges Review located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of our building, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. Later that day, Tuesday, April 9, at 11:00 in the morning, we have Calendar Review located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of our building at 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. Again, April 9, that's Tuesday, at 11:30 in the morning, we have an executive session for FAPo and MCLEA bargaining. Those are two unions that we bargain with pursuant to ORS 192.660 Paragraph 2D. That's located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of our building, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. Later that day, at 4:00 p.m., that's April 9, we have a Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council meeting located in the Commissioners Boardroom on the fifth floor, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem, that's our building. And then that evening, we have an Aurora Airport Listening Session located at the Helicopter Transport Services on 14497 Keel Road Northeast in Aurora, and that's at 7:00 p.m. on April 9. On April 10, that's Wednesday, at nine in the morning, we have a board session located in the Senator Hearing Room on the first floor of our building, that's 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. And then at noon on April 10, we have a SED Core Monthly Business Lunch located in Broadway Commons, 1300 Broadway Street Northeast in Salem, and that's our Regional Economic Development Corporation.
And I'm tired. There's a lot of work this week.
This is airport listening session. You're just gonna listen to planes come in and out?
Yeah. Oh, that's another whole subject. That'll be fun. Thank you, Commissioner, for reading that. So do we wanna discuss anything else? I don't think so. I think we're gonna adjourn our business, and then we will go right into opening a town hall. So you just got to witness a board session. That's what we do every Wednesday. Sometimes it gets a little meaner than that, sometimes it's a lot more fun. Depends on the subject. So we've got an agenda for the town hall that has been put together, and we've got several presentations that we'd like to give to you, but we want to reserve lots of time for you to ask questions. So I think, Lisa, you're gonna kick this off, or is Jolene gonna kick it off with the census? You got a team effort here. We're gonna talk about the census that's coming up on April 1, 2020. Every head will be counted at someplace in the world, or in the United States.
All right, thank you. I'm Lisa Trowernick with the Marion County Board of Commissioners Office. It's a pleasure to work there, and it's a pleasure to serve all of you. We are here tonight to talk about the census. It seems like it's a long way away. Census Day is April 1, 2020. It's very important to our county, our state. The census, I'm just gonna give you a little bit of information about it. The census is constitutionally mandated every 10 years. Every person in the U.S. is supposed to be counted, and so we have a big task in Marion County to be able to get out and count everybody. Jolene's gonna talk a little bit about that. This is the first year that the census will be electronic, so that's a, it could be a little bit of a barrier to people. It also, though, is going to be available paper and over the phone. People can call in and have a census worker on the phone help them fill it out. The census appropriates congressional seats and determines local funding for lots of the programs that are important to our community. Some of those are highway planning and construction, low-income energy assistance, Section 8 vouchers, Medicare Part B, and then many others. Many of the social services that our communities rely on in Marion County are based on the numbers that come from the census. So if we don't get an accurate count, now we have to wait 10 more years to get an accurate count. We know that our county and our state has grown significantly in the last 10 years, and so it's very important that we reach out and get everybody counted so we get all of the resources to our community, to our local areas, so that we can work on all the projects that are important to all of you.
Great, thank you, Lisa. And I'm Jolene Kelly. I also work in the Board of Commissioners Office and am helping with the Census Committee. We started a few months ago and partnered with the City of Salem to establish a Complete Count Committee for Marion County, and we also have connected with our federal partners at the U.S. Census as well as the State Complete Count Committee. In fact, yesterday on April 1, Governor Brown declared April 1 as Census Day, and they unveiled their website and introduced their Complete Count Committee. We will be meeting with all of our local stakeholders on April 24 at 3:00 p.m. at Center 50 Plus in Salem, and you're all invited. We have invited representatives from all 20 cities as well as local nonprofits and some of our community organizations, and again, all are welcome to attend. In order to make sure that everyone is counted, we need to make sure that those that are hard to count are included, and so that's where the work with our local partners comes in, so that way the groups that you work with and that you know and that you are regularly in contact with, we're able to make sure that those folks are connected with the census and how to do that. So we do have a webpage now on the county website, and we have established a new newsletter to help keep people informed. And then again, we invite participation from the local communities, and we hope to see you on April 24.
Thank you for your presentation. Any questions about the census? Sure. And just, for the record, just identify yourself. Thank you.
Can I have a question? I talked to her a few earlier about the, "I am a citizen, are you a citizen?" question. I'm concerned about the fact, not the fact, I'm concerned that some people, because of that question, won't do the census at all. And I'm concerned that, you know, because of that, that the count will be much smaller than it should be. My personal opinion is that I won't even answer that question because I don't feel that it's a relevant question for what the census is for.
So we won't have any jurisdiction over where that question gets asked or not? It's a federal question? Okay, right.
That's down the road.
Yeah, okay, good.
So that question is currently in front of the Supreme Court, we heard. We had initially heard that there would be a response from the Supreme Court in April. Now we've heard it could be any time between April and June, and so that decision will be coming. We do have assurances for... We do have assurances from our federal partners that all census workers take a lifetime oath that information is kept confidential, and is only used in the aggregate for, for the census data. That's used, I believe it's 72 years before census information is even available for individuals. So, they've tried to provide a lot of assurances, but I think that once we hear from the Supreme Court, we'll know a lot more.
Yeah, I know there are, but now, just, I knew so. If it doesn't change, if it does, if it is on there, it's just that I'm, I'm concerned that people should be able to do the census. Well, because simply because of that particular question.
Okay, all right, good, that's legitimate.
We do encourage people to answer all the questions that you're comfortable answering.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay tuned for April 1st, 2020. You know what? That's a good day.
It's his birthday, what a national holiday yesterday.
Yeah, we should've shut down the board's office, it was my birthday.
Yeah, we asked four times.
Right. Nobody listens to me, though. All right, so, next thing is Danielle, you're gonna give a little infrastructure update. And I'm just gonna ask staff, and we're going these presentations, keep 'em as quickly as possible, because we want to get to questions.
Yes. So, northforniumsewer.net is the website. Shelley Engel actually is now hosting that website for the sewer project. Short, short, the county came together, did a stress communities workshop back in April of 2015, and we put together an RFP, we had some preliminary design and engineering, just to see if it was even possible. And when we got that, is it even possible? It looked so nearly impossible that we just kinda said, okay, great, it's nearly impossible, we can do this. And so, starting in January of 2017, a very strong group of people, and as you saw earlier, the large contingency here today, have met, they have met now 27 times. We will have our 28th meeting this Thursday night. It is always the first Thursday night in Mill City at City Hall. We're about to bust out of that room, but we will always make friends and have more people around the table. So, the Northfornium Sewer Project is actually working on a governance for this, the wastewater for Mill City, Gates, Detroit, and Idana. One of the first questions we got is, are they gonna put a big, long pipe all the way from Idana down to Mill City? No, that makes no sense. So, I'm gonna leave that up to the engineers. But as of right now, the communities have actually all passed resolutions to continue to work together, and they've actually asked Mill City to take on the financial fiduciary role until they can get a full sewer district set up. And so, that's where it currently stands. The group has actually hired an attorney now, and I would wanna pass it over to anybody else that needs to say anything else from the group, if there's anything. Yes, Jerry?
Hey, Kevin. He's complaining about the internet.
Yeah, come on up, Jerry.
Well...
We're gonna talk about broadband in a second.
We're not gonna have everybody come up to the microphone tonight, though.
Yeah.
But Kevin's complaining about the internet.
Who is?
The nice thing about...
You. You've been complaining about the internet.
The nice thing about the sewer system, while we've got ditches open, we're inviting them to put the internet in the ditch along with our sewer system.
It's called a dig-ones policy.
That's right.
So, that's coming.
Yeah, so, that's the other piece. So then, yay, let's talk about, now, let's talk about internet. I'm a kind of a nerd, this is like my...
I knew you complained about the internet.
So, with that, though, anytime you have open ditches, it is a great opportunity to put additional utilities in the ground. And so, I've actually started having conversations with some providers and starting to put together some broadband task groups to help us through the canyon to get broadband fiber into the ground. So, I don't know if you guys know actually how slow your internet is, because when I first came up here, everybody was like, we, it's fine. Until they told me that they actually drive all the way to Staton to upload a photo. And I mentioned that I don't think that's necessarily a merit of pride to say you can handle it. So, let's actually try to get some broadband in the ground, and so, that's where we're moving towards. We're very, very early in the process. The commissioners have had two work sessions just in the last month and a half. So, hang in there, we will get some more information on the broadband. But if it doesn't, if we can't get it in pretty soon in Detroit and Idana, then the sewer project is our second guess. So, yes, I can answer.
Please reiterate what the grant money is for.
Yes, thank you.
That grant, that big check that you stole?
That giant, that giant check. So, that giant check is actually from Marion County for a community project grant. So, the community, the communities have all come together, and they have hired, they've hired a consultant to actually set up the governance structure for a special sewer district. And so, that's what that money is to start with.
Okay.
Anything else?
Very good.
Okay, thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you. And I guess I complain about the internet, but I do say this, I hope I'm alive when the first toilet flushes in the new sewer system. It's gonna take a while.
That's too easy. That's too easy.
That's too easy. Okay, we're gonna get a little North Fork update. I think Public Works and Sheriff's Department are gonna come up and talk about things that are happening up there. We just had a meeting that, these gentlemen have meetings quarterly with, and I saw Forest Service, Dave's here, with the Forest Service, BLM. You wanna come on up, Dave? And quarterly, they all get together, Public Works, Sheriff's Department, and talk about what's happening in the Little North Fork Canyon, because there's so many jurisdictions up there, and the public goes up there and recreates, and they don't realize, you know, where's the fire, where's the ambulance coming from? So, welcome, you wanna give us an update, what you're working on?
Thank you, Commissioners. I'll give you a quick roads type of update, and then I'll let these guys talk about what's happening on the recreational side. So, at our town hall a year ago, the North Fork Town Hall, I announced to everybody that we got the funding to fix the landslide at mile post four, that's the big one. And guess what? The funding document finally came to me today, or earlier this week, so I can get it down to the commissioners to accept. So, the funding really has arrived. The problem is, when I announced last year that we'd be, you'd see construction starting in 2021, we're gonna start a little, be able to start a little bit of work in 2021. You probably won't see heavy construction until the summer of 2022. So, that's an update on what's happening with the great big landslide. One of the hats I get to wear as Public Works Director is also the countywide emergency manager, and I want to just share some information from the recent snow event, so as many people know about this as possible. We have community emergency response teams, so it's called a CERT team. And today, we have a CERT team assigned to every incorporated city in the county. During the recent snow event, that team went door-to-door using a list that we have of folks that are sort of a vulnerable population, people that might have medical needs or may have trouble traveling where snow really impacts their daily lives and maybe even their safety. That team deployed to Detroit and Idana last month during the snow event to check on the people on their list. What I want, the reason why I'm sharing that is, if you don't know that that exists, and you know of vulnerable people up in those communities that may need to be on that list, please contact our Public Works Department, and we'll make sure that those people get on the list.
Yeah, again, Mark Ferms, Sheriff's Office. Last year was my third year up here, and last year was better than the year before, which was better than the year before. And we can give great credit to the commissioners and my bosses, who give us a whole bunch of support. The other piece to that is the cooperation that we have between the agencies, Public Works, Parks, to really define a more livable environment for the community that lives there and for the visitors that come and recreate. We continue to have meetings to improve this, we just had one this last week. One of the things that we are gonna start working on more expeditiously is the evacuation planning, particularly for the North Fork area. That's been a point we've talked about before, and that continues to move forward. So, this, this next season, hopefully, we don't have any large events, and we can continue to move forward as we have this last season. And lots of education and enforcement activity as needed.
Mark, thank you for your service up there.
You bet.
Appreciate it.
I think one of the biggest things we've been trying to work with between Forest Service, BLM, Sheriff's Department, Public Works, is that communication through the corridor. We know that communication is difficult, and access at times is difficult with just the safety factors. Last year, we were able to implement what you kinda call the football. So, each jurisdiction has a radio that we can all communicate together now. So, we have that opportunity to share information about, you know, what's going on here, there, or if we need the deputy's assistance, we can holler and get some coming quickly. So, that communication piece is critical for making sure we provide the appropriate services in the corridor for everybody.
Can I just speak to that just a little bit more? Part of what that's gonna allow us to do as well is for the different agencies to talk, and they can say, well, this area is full, this area is not full, redirect people, again, to make a better experience for those who come and visit. And then, once the corridor does fill, maybe give them some other options as to where they can go.
Deputy Ferms, do we have another deputy coming online for the Title III position up here?
I believe that announcement just went out today.
That's a big deal. And do you know when that's gonna be filled?
Commander?
Jim, sometime in June.
Okay, so we'll have another deputy full-time. Title III funds, some work that our federal delegation passed a bill that we can finally use some search and rescue funds that the Forest Service, and Dave, you wanna talk about the Forest Service? That's a good entry in what your status is and...
Sure, I'm Dave Hollomeyer, District Ranger on the Detroit Ranger District. And I'd just like to say thank you to the county. We've had a lot of turnover. I arrived here in July, Grady McMahon was my predecessor, you've had a good working relationship with him, and he started a lot of these programs we're talking about. And in December, we lost two of our law enforcement officers, and the county has picked that up and taken that area and given us extra coverage, so I just wanna publicly say thank you for that. We're excited about this plan we're developing, in that it's gonna be so efficient in that we're not gonna be driving by each other's facilities and to put toilet paper in a restroom that's a mile up the road, and we're gonna have some efficiency to actually give better service to the public. So, we're excited to see how this all plays out. It's, recreation season has started. The Opal Creek Ancient Forest folks have opened the road up and to the trailhead, and as a result, I was up there last Thursday. People are already flocking into the area. So, we do have the restrooms open now, and we're gonna be maintaining those up there, but there is a lot of activity going on. And unfortunately, because it is a remote area, we tend to have some folks who don't treat things as properly as they should. And so, it's nice to have those eyes out there with the county, so I just thank you for that.
Welcome to the team, too.
Yeah, it's good to be here.
Parks?
So, I'm not sure everybody's aware, we do have 18 county parks in Marion County, six of which are up our direction up here, three are on the North Fork, and then three off of Highway 22. Last year, the commissioners were able to fund an additional staff member, so we went from one to two, which is a big deal for us. That's allowed us to leave six additional parks open year-round. So, our parks on Highway 22 are now year-round accessible, and we're pretty proud of that. We've kinda elevated them with that year-round activity and maintenance to something we're very proud of. In addition, we'll bring on, and we're currently hiring our six seasonals, we'll have eight seasonals that'll help with everything from the fee collection that we're doing for parking on the North Fork, and then just, again, cleaning of restrooms, maintenance, trailheads, access, just to improve that experience for the public.
Great. Questions about the Little North Fork? Progress?
I don't have a question, but we had a thirteen mile, and I'm thankful for looking for the time he spent up there, he's done a wonderful job. And this last year, the snow, as anybody knows, it was up there, was terrible. For six, seven weeks, we didn't see the ground. And the CERT team did come by, and even though we couldn't get out, there was a tunnel in front of them, we couldn't. And we appreciated them coming by, because we're both on medications. And if we couldn't have got out, it was nice that they came by. Excuse my voice, uncomfortable. But we did appreciate the CERT team coming by, because if we couldn't have got out, it would've been nice to know they were about our heads or about us, how we can make it to that. So, we do appreciate that we're getting sides to a bear. And Mark has been wonderful for the last three or four years, whatever it takes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, good feedback. All right, thank you for that update. And of course, we're gonna get into some other topics that you wanna talk about, and I'll just say, I was at that meeting just briefly the other day on the coordination of the Little North Fork. And the last thing I said was, hey, it doesn't look like the lake's gonna be full this year. And we remember what happened in 2015 when the lake didn't fill, what happened to the Little North Fork, it got overran. So, I'm, I'm listening to this pounding rain coming down, and I'm hoping that I'm wrong, and that we get like about 10 inches of rain between now and June, that the lake will fill, and that'll take some pressure off the Little North Fork and, and help the businesses as well. So, this is your town hall now. We wanted to give you a flavor of what we do, as well as what our staff is doing. So, I wanna open it up for questions, and if you can raise your hand, we'll try to call on you. And then, if you can just, for the record, and everybody knows who you are, just identify yourself and who you're with, and we'll just open it up for any topics you wanna talk about.
Yeah, go for it.
Dan Tucker again.
Hi, Dan.
How involved was the county with the park engineers on their project, the Detroit Dam, the tower?
So, in fact, council just gave me an update. Maybe it should just come from you. We've been very involved, by the way. We entered into the lawsuit with the city of Salem, and Jane, do you wanna give a little update? I can't talk too much, but...
Right, just really generally, about a year ago, an environmental group sued the Army Corps, asking them to go ahead and make some, a drawdown to Detroit Dam and install a water control temperature device. The county and the city of Salem intervened, the city of Salem, because of concerns over drinking water supply and also turbidity, and then the county on the basis of concerns about water supply for agriculture and also for concerns about economic region up here, the impacts that a prolonged drawdown would have to the region up here, and, and the effect of a lowered lake would have for businesses around here and, and the economy. So, that case is progressing. There is going to be a hearing on one of the plaintiff's motions on Thursday. So, the court is gonna make a, probably a potentially very impactful decision this week. We have opposed the plaintiff's motion, so we'll have some more information next week.
Okay.
Second question.
There's the update.
Second question. On the bloom they had this last year. We're fortunate in the case where our water plant is able to irrigate, and still drink the water, and the plant would filter. I have some questions about the cause of the bloom. If the water, if the water is lowered, does the temperature go up? Does this rising temperature have anything to do with the cause of the bloom? That's the reason I was concerned about the level of the lake. Because the lower the water is, you would think the warmer the water is, you know? I was wondering if anybody's looked into that, if that's just fantasy on my, you know, fantasy on my part.
You wanna answer?
Mine would be counterintuitive, but it's early in the season, which says the water's still cold.
Right.
So, I don't have the answer, no.
What, there's many, there's many theories to this, they don't really have the answers. There's, there's a lot of reasons that they think maybe it happened. If you think about it, we didn't, last year, we didn't get a lot of rain in May, and the water was stagnant. Just think about your, a pond that you have in front of your house, and when algae grows, it's because it's not moving, right? So, the water was stagnant, there wasn't a lot of movement through the lake, that was one theory. There was talk about the type of chemicals that came down as a result of the fires the year before, did that impact it? Here's the thing, Detroit has algae blooms every year. I swim in them, I mean, I don't care, right? I don't drink the water, but it happens every year. And I don't know what, why it was worse this year than, than before, or why they detected it and didn't before. So, I think nobody really knows the answer to the question, but those are some theories. Maybe somebody else has other information. Has anybody else heard anything? All right. So, hey, Dean, just a minute before, I just wanted to make sure... So, hey, Dean, just a minute before, I just wanted to make sure that we thank the North Saniam Chamber, and I see some of the members, members here, and the Fire Department, Gates Fire Department, and Dave, you're, Dave is here, President of the Chamber, and I just want to thank you for hosting this event for us every year. It's just a great facility, and this is like one of the best facilities that we go to anywhere in the county. Be careful when I say that to St. Paul, right? Right?
If we say that, it's an act of state.
Sublimity? We haven't gone to sublimity, yeah. So thank you for hosting us and having us here. Yeah. Where's the food?
It's in the corner.
Oh, it's on the opposite end, or I would. So Dean, you had a question?
I'm sure I heard this right, that they changed the standard of what was acceptable and what is not acceptable for algae blooms last year?
So they did that after the bloom happened, OHA set a new standard, okay? In the middle of all that, they set a new standard.
So what used to be okay years ago is not okay?
For drinking, yeah, right. I think they set a new standard for the drinking. I don't know that they changed it for the recreation, though. So there's two alerts. There's two alerts. There's a recreation alert, the algae bloom that's in the water, they alert you whether you should swim or your dog should go in it or whatever. Yeah, I won't let my dog go, but I'll go. And then there's an alert for drinking the water, or a measurement for drinking the water. And I don't know, they changed it in the middle.
The other thing they did, they also had to have 10 consecutive days...
Can you identify yourself? Nobody here knows you.
But they also made it where you have to have 10 consecutive testing days of no, you know, below that standard, and that kind of skewed things a little bit, too.
There'll be a lot more testing going on, I'm sure. Dave?
Yeah, Commissioner, we just had a meeting, the Forest Service and the city of Salem had a meeting today about the algae blooms. And one of the bits of information, it was 10, changed from 10 to 4, so it dropped substantially. We did an analysis to see what that would have meant with our historic record, and what that would have meant is only one indication of a listing done other than what it's done. So what it has, so we're not looking at it being that big of an effect, it's more of how the city treats their, their issues downstream. So know that we have a lot of people working on it, and we're going to get everybody involved if we can to try and figure this out. And the commissioner is correct in that there are so many variables. I mean, as an individual, I'd love to be able to say, oh, it's this or that, but there are so many variables in dealing with the algae blooms that we just cannot say it's one thing or the other. A lot of people, a lot of Sharpe people and I have looked at it and come to the same conclusion, but it's being studied by a plethora of people, and I can guarantee you that.
Yeah, I've seen Marion, I've seen the blooms of Marion Lake, maybe later in the summer, maybe a bloom also.
We have historic information that Marion Lake has been bloomed since the thirties, you know, and so, yeah.
So before I forget, and I see Dave back there, there is a federal lakes meeting here on April 17th, correct, Dave?
Yes.
April 17th, federal lakes meeting, and I think Army Corps will be there, they better be here.
Yes.
Army Corps and, and the group that's normally here will be here on April 17th, so if you want to mark that down on your calendar, they'll be here. Yep?
Yeah, Greg Shepherd, this was in the front page yesterday, and I just wondered if you had any ideas why it's 40 feet below the curve as far as lake level? We've had your higher years than this, and...
Well, it's because we don't control the dam, but if we controlled the dam, there'd probably be water behind the dam. So what they say, what Army Corps says, is that we've had a dry year. We've had a dry year. And, and you think about it, the snowpack, I mean, there was three feet of snow in Detroit, what, a month ago? That snow, when it melts, it doesn't, doesn't just run off like rain into the, into the stream beds, it permeates down into the ground. So, snow doesn't fill the lake, rain fills the lake, we know that. The snow will maintain it over the, you know, the season, so we just haven't had that much rain. But one of the things that I read this last week, and I forwarded on to a few people, I think I forwarded it to you, Dean, and to Scott, that the, and to Cane's, Army Corps got a variance from their curve on like four other dams, but they didn't get it here. So I want to hear that from them. Why did they not apply for a variance on the curve at Detroit, but they applied for it? There's some logic, I'm sure they got some logic, like they want to put everybody out of business or something like that. But I don't know why they can do it somewhere else, but they can't do it here.
Yeah, it seems like they're laying out more water than they should, right?
Yeah.
The article also indicated that the Army Corps is actually talking to ODFW to change the water outlet requirement so that they can hold back more water, but they have to get that permission or they have to work with ODFW to make that happen.
They do that, they do that often on the flows. And if you want to know the flow, what's coming out, always people, I just had this debate with somebody the other day, they were looking at Detroit, and they were looking at the flow at Detroit. Don't look at the flow at Detroit, look at the flow at Big Cliff. That's the regulating dam. Detroit can be 3,000 cubic feet per second because they're generating power at one minute and, or for an hour or whatever, but then Big Cliff is the regulating dam that's got 1,000 cubic feet per second going down. Yes, sir?
Keys are in Gates. They've got the spillway open at Big Cliff for two weeks, running full water.
Right, but you know what the flow is. You go, you got to go to their teacup. I mean, visually, you go up there and you see, well, they're just spilling all this water over. So you got to go to their teacup diagram, and it'll tell you how much is coming out of, how much is coming in. It'll show you how much is coming into Detroit, and it'll show you how much is coming out at Big Cliff. So one of the reasons they spill water over the top, and I'm not defending Army Corps here, but I'm just telling you why they spill water over the top, is that's how they mix the water. So, or they may have...
For temperature.
For temperature, for fish downstream. They pour warmer water over the top, colder water comes over the bottom, and that's how they're currently mixing it, which we heard that, and we said, and they said they hit the temperature, so then why do we have to put in this, this deal? So, but that's, if you, if you go to their website, you can check, it's their teacup website, I don't know what the website is, but I've got it on my phone, and you can just look at the flow, what's going in and what's going out by the minute. Yeah. It's too much water going out, we know that.
Commissioner, if you click on that teacup also, just don't look at it, put your mouse on it and click on it, a whole series of charts come...
Yep.
...embedded underneath that, so just don't look at the teacup and try to figure it out. Double-click on it, all these charts will pop up.
You hear so much about Salem's being, Salem being so concerned about the quantity of water that they're getting out of the North Saniam. The lawsuit you were referring to, you're talking about, that's, that's just another example of it. Hasn't, why hasn't the city of Salem looked at building a plant that can, that they can filter the water from the little land? Historically, they had done it, got too polluted, they stopped it again. They'll find eventually where they're pulling through the water out of the North Saniam with their, through their sand filters and diverting it to Salem. Why aren't they building a plant that they can go back, they can filter the water to use from the little land and take, take their...
Yeah.
...throw them in on the North Saniam.
So as a result of the algae bloom, Dave, maybe this came out in your meeting with him, as a result of their algae bloom, they're looking at ways to mitigate and have alternatives to the North Saniam. It's not the quantity of wa, of water they're, they're concerned about, it's the quality of the water when they, when they're pulling it out. They did upgrade their filtering system at, what's the name of the island?
Garen Island.
Yeah, Garen Island out of State, and where they pull the water out. They made some improvements. That was a big part of their mitigation and fixing of the problem, but they're also looking at alternatives. And I think that may be part of their lawsuit is to say, hey, I know Congressman Schrader has filed a bill that would allow Army Corps to, to, in a project like this that they're talking about, to use dollars to mitigate. So for example, maybe if they're going to give, I don't know, $100 million, they could give to Salem so they could build that. That's the other reason why you don't do something like that, it costs so much money.
They talked about some wells, too, adjoining, that must have some filtration, but that was from the mayor, so they were looking to get those paid for, too, some alternatives that don't rely on just river flow.
I found out things like they have, they have a two-way system with Kaiser. Kaiser's on wells, so Kaiser was not impacted by this. And they have a valve they can open up, and Kaiser water can flow into Salem, but it only accounts for like 10% of the water needs they need.
They've also been talking about a ozone treatment facility. That's an $80 million project.
80 million?
Yeah, so we'll see if they actually...
Right. Linda, you had a question?
This is a question perhaps best directed at Paige and our Marion County guys back there. I'm wondering what has been the impact in our communities of the legalization of recreational marijuana? Can someone speak to that?
The sheriff's pointing at me.
Speaking of the sheriff, by the way, Sheriff Myers did call me today and say he, he couldn't be here because he's got some legislators that he's having to work on on some other bills, so he sent his regrets, but I told him he didn't need to be here because he's got a great team.
He's pointing at me, he's just nodding, like, yeah, no, I'm good. I'm Paige Parkinson from, I'm the district attorney, so I'm from the district attorney's office, and these guys get to hear enough out of me on a regular basis, but I, what the hell are you? I do, well, good to see you. Linda and I have this long history that stems from the fact that her son and I are good friends. You might know her son is a, is a true bear, he's a captain of the state police, so I always love seeing Linda at meetings because I feel very close to her as a person. The, that's a very good question, marijuana. So my short answer with the legalization of marijuana is anytime you make it easier to, to access a mind-altering substance, it's going to cause some problems. I would say, and I don't know, maybe the sheriff's office can back me up a little bit here, but I, I would say one of the biggest impacts we're seeing is driven under the influence of intoxicants. So one of the biggest issues we have is the inability to really accurately test that and assess for it with the impairment of marijuana. It's different than alcohol. Alcohol, as you all know, there's a, there's a standard BAC or blood alcohol content at which you are presumptively thought to be under the influence. That's a .08, we all know that, right? That's pretty standard, not just in Oregon, but across, across the country. And it's, it's a pretty easy measurement system. Marijuana does not have a commensary system or anything that's comparative to that. What that does is that puts a lot of pressure, a lot of impact on our enforcement division, patrol officers who are out on the streets actually trying to detect this and trying to establish whether someone is actually under the influence of marijuana or whether they've just used it in the last 30 days. Marijuana stays in your system for a really long time, so, so testing of, of your blood or urine is not particularly effective. We know it's in your system, we don't know that it's affecting you and thus affecting your ability to drive. So we're seeing some significant impact on the roads because of that. There's also an impact to our crime lab because of that. That's a state police-run and funded program, and they are struggling to keep up with the demand of the substances that need to be tested or the, the blood or the urine that needs to be tested as a result of that. They simply don't have enough resources and enough bodies to successfully and systematically test that the way that they need to. So we're seeing impact not just in our ability to detect it and, and prove it, we're seeing an, an impact in our ability to actually test it and therefore get those cases into court because of that. So I would say we're seeing impact there. You want to talk about that, Commander, or...
My name is Joe Caston, the enforcement division commander for the sheriff's office, and what that causes for us is from, from the beginning of our careers, they teach us how to detect alcohol. Well, now they're teaching drug recognition experts how to deal with other issues besides alcohol, and we've been doing that a lot over the years, but it's been increased now for us with the marijuana, with the change in the marijuana laws. But it is a bigger challenge for us to detect and determine what that substance may be and then to bring those folks in to deal with that particular DUI case.
And they're frankly just harder to prove. I, I mean, that's just, that's just a fact, it's just something that we struggle with, or just, it's not only harder to detect, but harder to prove. I would say the secondary effect we see is in violent crime. So again, anytime you're dealing with a substance that is accessible and legalized, and sometimes people misinterpret that as being safe and okay to use, you, you inhibit people's, people's thought processes and therefore they feel uninhibited with certain impulses and, and bad decisions follow. One of the impacts of having a state that is one of still only a few or a handful across the country that have it legalized is it attracts folks from other states because they believe, and they're probably right, that it's more plentiful and more accessible. What we have seen over the last couple of years, it was leading into the legalization and since then, is we've seen a few actual violent crimes, person-on-person assaults and even a homicide in Marion County, not in this particular community, but in our county, in which individuals came from out of state to either rob someone or settle some sort of drug debt that they perceived, and it resulted in some really violent confrontations. And we're always concerned about the draw that that places when people think there's a significant amount of drugs that might not be accessible to them or legal to them in other places. And again, just the, the sheer idea that you lower somebody's inhibitions and bad decisions follow, that's the case with alcohol as well, right? I always say, no good thing happens after tequila, right? We know, we know that that's, that's a thing, and, and I have police reports that can prove that, that seem to back me up on that. But, but marijuana has the, has a similar issue. And so anytime you're dealing with those, those kinds of substances, we're going to see some struggles from a law enforcement perspective, and it's going to be concerning to us from a public safety standpoint. Anything else? Yeah.
Have you seen it lead to an increase of other drugs like meth or OMO, and how do you counsel for those?
Yeah, so I guess that's kind of a two-part question. You know, I don't, I don't know if there's any specific data that is, that is new to us following the legalization, right? What I can tell you is the impact it's having on families and children. So marijuana, as any of you that have teenage children know, or that know a teenager, you might know that marijuana is actually more accessible to that population than alcohol even is. And so we have some concerns about what that means in the family context, what that means for parents being able to care for children, and what that accessibility then allows as a gateway, right, to other substances. Is marijuana always a gateway to, to more serious drugs? Not always. I think that would be a disingenuous thing for me to say, but from a law enforcement perspective, from a public safety perspective, am I concerned about what that kind of accessibility does and the message that that sends? That, like I said, just because it's legal doesn't mean that it's always safe or always appropriate. And yet, people confuse those two things, right? And especially in adolescent population where the accessibility is increased, we have concerns about that. You want to add anything to that?
Just thinking on the, on the, on the legal side of it and the driving side of it, a lot of what we've seen is people thinking, well, it's legal now, so they go and drive. It's not legal to drive when you're under the influence of marijuana, and that's one of the changes that we've seen.
No, that's absolutely right. And, and some of that is in education, right? We've got to get the message out a little bit more, but one of the ways we get the message out is enforcement of the issue. And, and when we're having trouble proving it or establishing that someone's actually under the influence, that's a challenge for us, for sure.
Dave, did you have a question?
I just wondered, you know, if we also, also go, and some of the other drugs that kids are getting, too, and maybe around the parents and medicine cabinet...
Absolutely.
How do you, how have you seen a uprising in drug, not just marijuana or alcohol, but these older camera, older prescription drugs that kids are taking advantage of?
Yeah, yes. I mean, certainly across the nation, there is a trend, right, with the opiate-based, the opiate-based drugs that often start with a medicine cabinet problem. It starts with the car accident that leads to a back problem that leads to a prescription that then gets abused or misused in some fashion. So we are definitely seeing a, and you've heard this, right, in the news, that, that term opiate crisis, that's not an overused phrase, that's a real thing, and we're still ahead of it in Oregon. We aren't to the, the same place that we are seeing the east coast states at with the, the opiate crisis, the overdose crisis, but we are absolutely seeing an impact. In Oregon, however, the Oregon Medical Examiner has the data, and she will tell you, it's actually he now, but our former medical examiner had the most recent set of data, and she would tell you that the, the number one killer in Oregon as far as controlled substances is still methamphetamine. So we aren't seeing the... aren't seeing the opiate crisis in the same way that the east coast is seeing it. But methamphetamine, meth, it's still, it's here. But methamphetamine is still a huge impact on our families, on our children, on the number of kids in foster care in Marion County, which is a huge number and something that, that I know the commissioners are always real concerned about and real supportive of our foster care efforts to try to deal with. So, we're definitely seeing that. But again, you're hitting on an accessibility issue, right? And anytime it's accessible, that's a problem. There is a bill in the legislature right now that's trying to address drug takeback issues and trying to force pharmacies to be required to take back those prescription meds that are no longer needed. Right now, pharmacies don't do it. The bulk of that responsibility falls on law enforcement who have to pay. The county pays Covanta a significant amount of money every year to dispose of those illegal substances properly. So, it's not in your water supply. So, it's not flushed down toilets. So, it's not in our landfills. But, but pharmacies, Big Pharma doesn't have the same responsibility to take back those drugs. So, those are things that are important to, to talk to your legislators about, to make sure that there are real strong laws about what do we do with those accessibility issues and that, that overprescription problem. I know that there is legislation across the country, even in Oregon, about trying to address just the overprescribing problem. But law enforcement isn't at the table as much as, as much as we should be. And that's not because we don't want to be. It's because we're not always invited into those rooms. And so, I think that's something that both the sheriff's office and I share concerns with. And there's a lot of police chiefs in this community that are concerned about that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Could you address the economic impact of legalizing marijuana, especially in the east county as, as far as taxes?
Well, here's where I would say... We have no benefit as a county. We, we don't get any taxes from the sale of marijuana. Cities will, the cities that have allowed it. But we, the voters in Marion County twice said no to recreation, retail, growing, production, and sales. So, the only places in Marion County where you can purchase, produce, grow recreational marijuana are in, within city limits that have said yes. So, that doesn't mean it's not happening in our county. There's still, which drives, it's still the Wild West. There's big medical grows still happening in rural Marion County. And OLCC allows those medical grows now to sell their excess into recreation. Don't get me started.
Just another question.
It's for you.
Yeah.
Was there been any study to determine how much, how much of the problem with opioids is from diversion where children are taking it? Is there a study on that?
You know, I don't know. I, I can't answer that study question. I know anecdotally that that's one of the biggest issues, right, is that, is this sort of overprescription where it's in somebody's medicine cabinet and it gets diverted to recreational use. So, it's certainly a concern. It's also, as someone mentioned, that marijuana as a gateway, it's that, it's those pills that are a gateway to heroin, right? It's pills that when you can't, when you, those pills are no longer accessible to you, you turn to the street version of the opiate, which is heroin. There's also a bill in the legislature right now about trying to hold drug dealers accountable when they, when their deal or their delivery causes a death. Right now, there is no state statute that allows for that. It's only federal legislation that allows for someone to be prosecuted for the death of someone when they sell drugs to them and that child or that person overdoses. And we're seeing that as an issue in teen populations, young adult populations.
Has any education been developed to educate the consumer about controlling their drugs better?
I hope so. And I, I don't know the answer to that as far as what's available to the average consumer. Certainly, you know, that, that should fall on the shoulders of doctors and pharmacies that prescribe that.
Right.
People should be given, given information about how to properly dispose of that.
Typically, when you go to the pharmacist, they give you some, some instructions. But Cheryl, I, I wanted to follow up on your question. Mayor's here. That's a good question. You have two cities in the canyon that have legal recreational sales, Gates and Detroit. What kind of revenue have you seen in Detroit or Gates from, from, from your establishments?
The thing is, city Gates gives a lot of non-tax income. There is a patent in the state. We get 28 cents a thousand for our property tax.
No, 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 not property taxes on the marijuana. What's your income off?
Our property tax pays $7,000 a year. Our marijuana tax pays $14,000.
So, you've gotten $14,000 a year off of the establishment. You know what yours is, Jim?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah. So, it's not a lot of money, obviously.
I think Indiana gets about $200 a quarter out of it.
Do they have, do they have a establishment?
For some reason, you can still get revenue from Detroit.
Okay. Any other questions? How many inches did the lake come up while we were sitting here, Dave?
It's pouring rain.
I'll tell you what, it's pouring rain here. I just looked, Detroit wasn't raining, according to my weather app. So...
Wrong side of the dam.
Yeah, it's the wrong side of the dam. It's raining. Anything else? Otherwise, we are going to say thank you. Oh, we got one more.
Steve Wynn, City of Little City. I think we talked about it, it's very important. But I have one issue that it pains everybody in here. We need a new school. And I've gone to the lottery department. They shined me off. One of the Indians, they shined me off. We all need to go for a new school. We're kids and our grandkids.
When's the bond, when's the bond going on the ballot?
May 21st.
I missed it. Huh?
May 21st.
May 21st.
May, May 21st. Okay.
Keep it ahead. I hope the commissioners, maybe we talked to the lottery department? I talked to a lady, she shined me off. Oh, no, we can't do nothing.
Well, I'm a registered voter in your school district. I live in Detroit. So, I'll be voting for it.
Everything we can get.
Yep.
Our grandkids need it.
It's a procedural question. Can the commissioners endorse a local school ballot?
An elected official can do anything they want. Trust me.
Not everything.
There are some limits.
You know what, you know what, I'm, I'm the one of the three of us that's always in trouble with my ballot.
I couldn't even send a nasty letter to the legislature this morning.
My, my point being is we don't have to educate. We can, we, you know, like, she, she's an elected official, the sheriff's an elected official, all three of us are elected officials. So, we can, we can endorse anything and do anything we want from that standpoint. The question is, we always, I always have to look and see why and what and all that, what we're going to do. So, and, and you always have to say, does this elected official help me with an endorsement? Because sometimes it doesn't help, right?
So, Mike Long wants to talk about his golf tournament before we leave. You just got to.
Mike, you got an announcement?
Well, I'd love to make an announcement. We've conducted the youth competitive golf tournament for 18 years. This last year, we were able to net $27,390 that we will be able to distribute this month in scholarship and funding assistance grant. In addition, I want to say thank you to Marion County because you guys have been very supportive of our tournament. And I challenge Lynn County to match your, your support. John Vince said he would take your team on, Sam.
Well, the problem is, see, I can't use these guys. I got three sons that can really play golf. I bring in the high handicap and occasional lucky shot. It's a winning combination. I can't give it up.
We've also heard from a lot of people that it is one of the best-run and most reliable charity tournaments they've ever played.
And good food, too.
Good.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for all you do, Mike. And we'll be up...
Thank you.
And I think, what's the night of the award ceremony? It's coming up.
Twenty, twenty-fourth.
April 24th, that's a Wednesday.
Yeah.
Well, you're not coming.
Why am I not coming?
You're not on the list.
I'm not? With that, we are going to adjourn. Thank you very much.